And we are assuming that since we are no longer with the ADC that they are working behind to form the Dogtown Farmers Market, which will be managed by the Chairman of the Board, Harry Hamlin's wife, Tiffany Hamlin. They have contacted some of our farmers. I have not been contacted personally, but I have been forwarded the email.
Three minutes, Barbara. Wrap it up for me.
Okay. So, there's other things too that basically we have, we want to know where the money has gone for the last several years and why after nine years in this that they show that they want to promote a market and to actually start another market and not complementing or working with the market that they do have. And they are the reason why we came over here nine years ago. I personally dedicated a lot of time, have a lot of passion for the market that we have, and we have reorganized and regrouped. And the market that they are wanting to put in place is on the original space that we worked to obtain at Fourth and Main. That was our original location that we were moved off of. Unfortunately, John Godan does own this property, and we cannot go back to that property. And this is where they're wanting to have their farmers market two blocks away from us. But the main thing is, is that we don't see like, they should be awarded $95,000 to work in this way, knowing that we are trying to resolve issues back from 2012.
Thank you, Barbara. Come on, John. That's not cool. Okay, let's go into unfinished business.
R-15164, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of a memorandum of understanding between the City of North Little Rock and the International Association of Firefighters, F-A-F-L-C-I-O, Local Number 35.
Move for adoption.
Second. Questions?
Don't we have an amendment?
Yep.
On the insurance.
Yeah, I mean, I read that.
On the insurance date.
Yes, there was a, well, first of all, there was a document that was emailed out, and that's going to have to be amended to the legislation. It's not currently attached, the new revised agreement that was emailed out to everyone. There was a question about, I think, the effective date of insurance. And, you know, we had discussed that. Honestly, that's the same language it carries forward in every one of the union agreements that we have when we looked at them. And it's the same way that they've worked in the past. So, as I understand it, the insurance that we have currently in the city, everybody's already signed up for it, and it's already there. From a contractual standpoint, I understand your concern. You know, we can amend it or not, you know, that's the will of the council. But whenever we had discussed this, I think it's, you know, it's same agreement as last year, changed the last digit by one.
Right.
Is that's the kind of the process that's been gone forward.
But it wasn't changed, but the digit wasn't changed.
I think that it was changed. And it says from, and I understand what you're saying, it says from 2015.
Right, January, same insurance is January 1st, 2015.
Of course, that was assuming that that contract had have been approved in December.
Right, so normally, as those things are negotiated, because negotiations start back in 2015, so that's why it's like that.
I don't care, Debbie, if you want to change it.
But we don't have the same insurance that we had January 1st, 2015. We have different insurance.
Right, but it's not saying that. What it's saying is, is that the insurance for the firefighters is 100%, and the families are 75. It's not who the insurance company is, it's what the city pays for them.
It says we will provide the same insurance.
Yeah, I don't care. Whatever you're comfortable with, if you want to amend it.
I want to change the date.
Okay. How about a motion?
That's my amendment.
All right, how about a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Where, where is that?
It's on page 14.
Yeah.
The date of assurance to move it.
I'm sorry, who made the motion in second?
Me.
Okay, second.
Second. So Diane, are you tracking where that date is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Got it. Lynn, you understand what we're doing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, on the motion.
Hold on just a minute.
Okay.
What are we doing?
We are changing one line in the top line of where it says insurance under Article 26. It currently says health insurance will stay the same as in effect of January 1, 2015. As Alderman Ross has pointed out, we don't have the same insurance as we had.
We have different insurance.
So, the...
At least a different pool.
And I believe the way that the city and the union has negotiated is really not so much about the type of insurance that we have. Your point's well taken, but I don't think that was the real negotiating point. It's the who's contributing what, what are the payment levels? And that's the point at which we reached agreement. I don't think that it harms anything to clarify the date at all.
Well, this is more cosmetic than it is anything, then. It doesn't have any meat to it whatsoever, other than just...
It does, it certainly does no harm to amend it to 2015.
So, it's not going to, it's not going to affect any negotiations or whatever, so?
No. I think we're still trying to reflect the same thing that the parties have negotiated.
Right. Okay.
It just brings it to more current standards.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption is amended.
There you go.
We have another amendment.
Amendment to attach.
We have another amendment.
Amendment to attach.
You've got to attach the amendment, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Ross, will you make that motion?
Yes, I will.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to attach the memorandum. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1610. Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. I'll try again. Move for adoption is amended.
Second.
Second.
Let me make one quick comment. Lynn DeRosa's in the audience. He's the president of the Firemen's Union. And we made an agreement last week when we finalized all of our issues, when I agreed to go back pay to January 2nd. And the agreement was that by June of this year, the union negotiating committee is going to present us with a, an agenda on when we're going to have our meetings, when we're going to make our adjustments, and what our deadlines are for coming up with an agreement, so that we won't run over into 2017. And they all agreed. I took part of the responsibilities, they took part of the responsibilities for us not being able to get it done last year. And so, we've got a plan that that won't happen again. And so, Lynn, thank you and your committee for working with me on that and giving me the full year to look at those new issues over time. So, with that, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Consent agenda?
Okay. Anybody want to pull from the consent agenda? Ms. Ross?
R-1618 and R-1620 and R-1621.
All right, how about a motion to approve 17, 19, 22, and 23?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, okay. All right, who's going to pull 17?
18.
18.
18, sorry.
R-1618, Mayor Smith, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an enhanced community services agreement with Argenna Downtown Council.
Okay. Motion?
Move, move for adoption.
Second. Questions, comments?
Well, Ms. Armstrong brought up a question when she was up here. How much of this $95,000 is used for the farmers market, since it will be their competition? I'm just curious.
I would assume none.
Is there anybody here to?
Donna's here. Donna, do you want to come up?
We are, we're not associated, the Argenna Downtown Council is not associated with this new farmers market that's in the planning stage. And we have no money allocated for it, absolutely not, have no plans to financially support it.
Okay, so that's all money?
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
No.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1620?
Thank you.
Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with the Arkansas Art Center.
Do I have a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Comments, questions? Ms. Ross?
I have an attachment that Ms. Bowman gave to us today. It's the background information for the Art Center. They were the only ones that didn't specify what the funds would be used for, but it is in their background information. So, just attach this so that we'll have it for the record.
All right, about a motion to amend by attaching that? Second. On the motion.
What about the other, the reporting guidelines? Did you want that attached to or no?
I think that's already in there, isn't it?
Is it?
The one that was, I don't know that the one that was emailed out was?
Mr. Carter sent it out Friday.
I emailed one out Friday because I believed it was not.
Well, it's attached that too.
It's not.
Okay. Then we want to attach that also.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Yes, we do.
Motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1621?
Thank you.
Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with the Arkansas Regional Innovation Hub Incorporated.
Move for adoption.
Second. Questions, comments?
Same every year, the $85,000 that's to go to Art Connection. Can we have that put in there somewhere? I want it specifically stated in there that it goes to Art Connection.
$85,000 goes to Art Connection?
Does every year.
I'm Warwick Sabat. I'm the executive director of the Arkansas Regional Innovation Hub. And Art Connection's been absorbed into the Innovation Hub, and so, the $85,000 this time, we've sort of allocated to programming across, you know, the various things that we do. We weren't aware that there was an understanding that $85 had to be allocated to Art Connection this time. I mean, that's not how we did the budgeting for this particular proposal.
Yeah, and if you haven't been over there in a while, the way that they've integrated all those together, it'd be pretty hard to, I mean, you could dedicate it and pay your salaries out of that to Holly or whoever else, but I think the way that they're working this, they're getting the kids in the Art Connection more involved with the computers and with the startups, and it's pretty impressive.
I guess, and my one thing is the $85,000, when this first started, it was because, and this is where I agreed to, it was because it was for the youth, and that's why I want to make sure that the full $85,000 is spent on youth. I don't know how we put that in there, but when we justify what we've done for our youth, I want to make sure that we can show that that $85,000 went for the...
How many, how many kids did you have tour over there, not even finished last year?
We had over 6,000 students.
I mean, actually working there. I mean, that we had the students, you know, that are in the Art Connection program. Mr. Taylor, you may be able to help me more on this, I don't know, but...
Last year?
Uh-huh.
I think there were, on a consistent basis, about 20 that worked at the Art Connection on a consistent basis.
Art Connection, consistent basis. I mean, if you can assure me that that $85,000 goes to the student, to the youth of North Little Rock?
That's easy. That's absolutely what the money's going to.
Okay, so you can show us a performance next year, too?
Absolutely.
How many students and children and youth?
I'm confident that we're actually serving more of youth in North Little Rock now than we were ever before, but I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And when we're putting together a youth package, and we want to see what we've spent it on, we want proof.
I can promise that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Consent agenda?
Okay. Anybody want to pull from the consent agenda? Ms. Ross?
R-1618 and R-1620 and R-1621.
All right, how about a motion to approve 17, 19, 22, and 23?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay.
How about a motion to adopt as amended?
Oopsie.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1608, Mayor Smith?
Can I hold it, please?
Okay. R-1609, Mayor Smith?
Call it.
An ordinance establishing job classifications and numbers of employees for each department of the City of North Little Rock for 2016, first reading.
How about a motion?
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1608, Mayor Smith?
We have an amendment.
We're going to strike any of the changes underneath the fire department. We're not real happy with the wording, and we're trying to fix it. So, we're going to strike everything on there and bring it back as another quote ordinance in two weeks after that we've all walked through. The chief's going to work on it, Karen, Danny, Jason, and...
If you give me just a second, I can walk you through some things that's going to get you back to exactly where you want to be with the amendments on this ordinance. So, because it's hard to change all the changes that are in there because the numbers bounce around.
Okay.
So, if you'll give me just a second, I can walk you through, and we can change those. If everybody just go to page six of 12, and if you got your pen handy or your highlighter for your computer screen, then I can walk you through it real quick. So, the problem is with some of the grant-funded positions that we've got to work out. So, what I need you to do is to line through the line that says Captain Y03X, delete that And then if you'll skip down to firefighter Y01 line, and just delete that comment afterwards, the nine deleted by promotion, just delete that comment afterwards. And then if you'll skip down to lieutenant Y02X, and delete that line. And then that will re-center us, the numbers match. And as soon as we get a better grip on the use of the grant funds, we may need to come back for an amendment to this part, but that'll get the rest of the ordinance adopted.
All right. The issue that we've got is that with these new firefighters, we're going to have to promote three captains, three firefighters, three lieutenants to captain, six firefighters to lieutenant. And it's issue on grant funding, or general fund funding, or fire department budget funding, so that's what we're going to do in the next two weeks. All right, how about a motion to make that amendment? Ms. Ross, you make that amendment?
I'll make that amendment. That gets us back to square one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Where we were before.
Who is the second?
Sir? Ma'am?
Who is the second?
Mr. Taylor.
Okay. Ross? Okay, on the amendment.
Just one, one thing, though, too, there that, under that, the line that we struck out, Y02X, under lieutenant, where it said three, it really should have said six if you were adding up the numbers. It wasn't coming right, so just, it's being struck out now, so it's fine, but it should have been a six.
That X is going to mean that it's, you know, grant-funded position, not grant-funded, but if a captain, if we have to in three years, let some of these firefighters go because the grant ends, then we'll have to take a captain. We might have to take a captain and move him back to a lieutenant. So, the Y03X and Y02X, those are the ones that will be determined that in two or three years, there's a possibility that they would be, have to go back to their original level of employment.
They know that now, right?
They know it, yeah. And we've talked about it, we've talked about it in, with the union and Chief Murphy. Okay, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Hang on, hang on, there's a question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor.
Wow, so they, so they get promoted under this grant, and then, and what, three years, all of a sudden the grant goes away, they get demoted?
Possible. You know, there might be some attrition there with firefighters retiring, captains retiring or whatever else, so, you know, are we going to have three captains retire in the next three years? Maybe? Maybe?
And, and if I could, if you'd let me interject, Mayor, I just want to add that this, this was malleable at 4:30 today. We were trying to get some of this sorted out this afternoon. That's why we want to kind of go back to what we approved this last summer, and then make sure that we've got all this straight before we come back to you again. But that, the concept is if someone's promoted into, say, one of these kind of holding positions, that as soon as one comes available, they would slide across. So, it's kind of that. It gives kind of a, almost like an in-between kind of phase, and then we'll see where, because grant funds may be continued, we'll just have to see what we can do with it. But it's, you know, certainly, you don't want to take somebody's promotion away from them. But if we don't have the funds available, that might be what we're left with.
But they would much rather spend the next three years as a captain with a chance of having to go back to be a lieutenant than stay a lieutenant, so...
It kind of reminds me of my Comcast promotion, but, you know.
Good point.
Bring you in for a hundred bucks, and then after 18 months, it goes up to $200.
But they understand it, and they're okay with it. Ms. Ross?
And they will, I mean, they will have to sign some saying that they understand this and that it can't happen. I mean, we don't want it to happen, but, but there is the possibility if we don't have the funds.
Yeah.
But if we want to keep Station 11 open, we're going to have to do something.
Right.
If the grant goes away.
Right. Okay, where are we, Ms. White?
Alderman White?
Ms. White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1610? Alderman Taylor?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a waiver to allow variances for a freestanding pole sign on property located at 11200 Highway 165 in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules and place another second reading.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
No.
An ordinance granting a waiver to allow variances for a freestanding pole sign on certain real property located at 11200 Highway 165 in the City of North Little Rock, second reading.
Move to suspend the rules and place another third reading.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
certain real property located at 11200 Highway 165 in the city of North Little Rock, second reading.
Move to suspend the rules and place another third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
No.
An ordinance granting a waiver to allow variances for a freestanding pole sign on certain real property located at 11200 Highway 165 in the city of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
Move for adoption.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Could we have a discussion about this?
Discussion about this?
Absolutely. Go.
Okay, you know, we, as I recall, we approved a monument sign. And within that monument sign, it was also a reader sign, electronic. Is that correct, Mr. Taylor?
For where?
For this particular location.
No, sir, we, we approved a overlay district so that we can do electronic changeable copy signs in that area. So it wouldn't, it wasn't, it, I guess, um, it would be a monument signed by, by city ordinances because we don't, that's, that's what we do now. So now, that we're, we're trying to move forward, then there the, I think there the variance in this ordinance that would allow us to do the, the sign in its existing position.
All right, so, so we'll have a reader sign up on a pole?
13 feet up.
Know what you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Uh, we have a motion, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
No.
Witcher?
No.
Motion carries on the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.